Good evening and welcome to the Vineland Board of Education Special Meeting, May 3rd, 2017, at 6:00 PM. Roll call, Ms. Haley?
Ms. Acosta, here. Ms. Cottis Potty?
Present.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. Medio?
Here.
Ms. Rios? Mr. Sobrana?
Present.
Mr. Boardley?
Here.
Mr. Jennings?
Present. In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Vineland Board of Education has caused notice and posting of the meeting to be sent to the following, announcing time and place thereof, agenda, etc., The Daily Journal, The Press of Atlantic City, The Grapevine, The Clerk of the City of Island, Administrative Office, Public Bulletin Board. Flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we will have any public comment on agenda items? Is there any yellow sheets, Ms. Haley?
No.
Is there anyone that would like to comment on our 2017-2018 budget? Seeing none, thank you. Ms. Gruccio, Dr. Gruccio? Go ahead, Dr. Gruccio.
I would like to recommend the approval of the budget, which is as follows. The school district budget for 2017-18 for submission to the State of New Jersey Department of Education, with general funds being $172,157,259, and the local tax levy $23,61,577. Special revenue fund in the budget, $24,657,000, no debt service. Total budget being $196,814,955, and the total local tax levy, $23,61,577. Do you want me to read these?
Any...
You can do it at the same time.
Is there any comment or conversation from board members? Seeing none, I ask for a motion?
We would actually be approving A and B, because I read the local tax levy, so we would be... Can we approve them both together, Bob?
Yes, absolutely, sure. A and B, motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Haley, roll call.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Cottis Potty?
I'd like to thank everybody who worked on this budget. I still have a few concerns about it. I have concerns about the money from the city, from Landis. We've still yet to see any kind of commitment that will help us with the Landis building. I'm concerned about that. But in spirit of compromise, I'm going to vote yes, although I do have reservations.
I should apologize, because right before the meeting, I received a letter from the city, so I just gave it to Chris.
I thought everybody received one, I'm sorry.
No, I just got it, so I just handed it to Chris. So just so the board knows, we did get a commitment from the mayor, and it was the amount that we spoke about.
Letter of intent for both parcels is $450,100, representing the purchase price of the parking lot, and $350,000 for purchase price of Reber School. So we do have a letter of intent, and I'm sorry, I should have disclosed that earlier.
Yeah, I apologize, I just got it.
No, that's fine, but was it appraised for... That's my concern, you know? I mean, for us as a district with the money, that was my concern, too, so...
What I was told is it was based off of comparable prices, okay?
Thank you. Ms. Haley?
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Sobrana?
I'm going to abstain. From the very beginning, I opposed the repurposing of Landis School for anything other than to remain a school, but I think there are good things in this budget, and I think a lot of people worked very hard on it, in particular, removing the armed guards and upgrading our security force, and also upgrading the turf on our football field, which will avoid possible injuries and also improve our program. I believe that there are enough votes already to approve it, but I'm going to abstain.
Mr. Boardley?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Right now, we were entertained public comment on any item. We will have public comment again at the end of our work session, but does anyone have anything they would like to discuss with us or comment on? Seeing none? Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're going to take a few-minute recess, and we'll be right back with our work session.
Good evening and welcome to the Vineland Board of Education Open Work Session Meeting, 6:00 PM, May 3rd, 2017. Roll call, Ms. Haley?
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Ms. Cottisbody?
Present.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. Medio?
Here.
Ms. Rios? Mr. Sabrana?
Present.
Mr. Boardley?
Here.
Mr. Jennings?
Present. In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Vineland Board of Education has caused notice and posting of this meeting to be sent to the following announcing time and place thereof, agenda, et cetera, The Daily Journal, The Press of Atlantic City, The Grapevine, The Clerk for the City of Vineland, and the Administrative Office Public Bulletin Board. Flag salute?
I would like to introduce you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Goodness, we got rolling here. We have a resolution for executive session?
We do not.
Okay. Any special presentations, Dr. Guccio?
Yes, we have a few this evening. I'd first like to introduce Mrs. Cheryl Rasmussen and Mr. Phil Giambri from Vineland High School. They will be recognizing students who competed in the Technology Student Association State Competition at the College of New Jersey.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you.
First, I'll just explain what that is because probably you don't know. There are seven organizations that are funded by the United States government, all seven falling under the CTE Career and Technical Education umbrella. And Technology Student Association is one, and HOSA is another. And we have two more at Vineland High School. So they do projects. Ours, our area is related to people who will go on to college-trained programs such as architects, engineers, people, graphic designers, computer programmers, that sort of in our organization. So some of the projects that the students did this year were robotics. They had to, in one project, they had to design, build, and execute a video game. We had one young man that had to do extensive research on vaccines and do a presentation on that. There's like sixty-seven different events that they could choose from. So it's actually a really good competition. And the kids get a chance also to be judged by professionals in the field, which is something that they rarely really get. And they get feedback from the professionals as well. So, you know, it's the career prep thing, too. So that's kind of checking that box. So, we don't have very many of our students here today, but two are here, so come on.
Thank you. Come on up. Okay, we have certificates?
Can you tell us who the two students are?
Okay, Giovanni and Nate. And Giovanni worked on robotics and Nate worked on video games.
Very nice, thank you. Okay. I'll make sure they get them all. So you probably don't have, I'll make sure they get them.
Designers and two kids.
Get them. Giovanni, I'll get, I'll make sure we get it now, I'll make sure we get it, he gets one.
Two students.
Yeah. Thank you. We'll get it, we'll, I'll get it, I'll talk to. Giovanni? He's short, so I didn't want to know. Thank you and congratulations.
Yeah.
And next we have?
Okay, next I'd like to welcome Mr. Sergeant Chris Miller, Vineland High School aerospace science instructor, and he will honor our JROTC cadets on their achievement in the Washington Township Drill Competition.
Like Dr. Guccio said, I'm Master Sergeant Miller, I teach ROTC at the high school. Just recently, we competed in the Washington Township Drill Competition at our Washington Township High School. It was our fourth of five drill competitions for this year. It's a real good chance for the students to meet different cadets all around the state of New Jersey. We competed in five total this year, Bridgeton, Washington Township, Glasgow, Piscataway, and Jackson High School. So we've, you know, traveled far to compete with the other cadets in Washington Township. I'll let our Vice Commander, Cadet Walker, tell you guys how we did at Washington Township.
At Washington Township, we placed first place in color guard, first place in armed solo, which is Clifford, like right over there. We got second place in unarmed inspection, second place in new cadet basic drill. We got third place in unarmed regulation. We got third place in academic team. And we also got second and third for knockout, that's like a drill competition that we have at the end. And we also got fourth and sixth place for knockout as well.
Fantastic.
Let's make two lines, like a line in the back and then a short line. Okay, call.
Nelson is not here?
Nelson is not here?
Giovanni?
Yeah.
Riel?
Riel.
Jessica, no?
Eddie?
Moses?
Congratulations.
Next, I'd like to call forward Mrs. Angela DiTavio. She is from Vineland High School, the HOSA advisor, and she will honor students who competed in the 2017 HOSA Medalist Regional and State Competitions.
Hey, good evening, everybody. My name is Angela DiTavio. I'm a registered nurse and I teach at the high school, the dual-credit healthcare electives. I also advise HOSA at VHS. I'm very happy to be here tonight to acknowledge our wonderful Vineland High School Health Occupation Students of America, a chapter that we have at Vineland High School for many years, and I thank you for inviting us here tonight. These students that we have here in HOSA are very interested in the healthcare field and in helping others. Many of them are planning to pursue careers in the medical field upon completion of high school, either by attending college or attending a vocational healthcare program to become doctors, nurses, pharmacists, and other types of professions in the medical field. Several members of our HOSA chapter competed at both regional and state competition this year, and I'd like to announce their names and what events they received medals for. I'd also like to thank their parents for all that they do, and to you, the Board of Ed, and our administration for supporting these wonderful Vineland High School students. Healthcare, as you know, is a very popular field of study in our area with a multitude of job opportunities. I'll start to call their names and they'll come up one by one to receive their certificate. We have twelve medalists. One could not attend, but the other eleven did attend tonight. My first medalist that I'd like to announce is Amy Antonio, who received a medal in Prepared Speaking on a Medical Topic. Our next medalist this evening that came tonight is Raisha Campbell, who received a medal in Medical Spelling. Our next member of HOSA who received a medal at regional competition is Ezraile Chavez Rico for Pathophysiology. Our next medalist who's been in HOSA since the ninth grade, and she's in eleventh grade now, a very dedicated member, is Frideli Dello Cruz, who received a medal in Research Persuasive Speaking on a Healthcare Topic. Our next medalist this evening, who received a medal in a very tough area called Behavioral Health, is Crystal Lee Gonzalez Salibirios. Our HOSA secretary, who also went for competition this year in Trans Cultural Healthcare and received a medal, is Genna Gupta. We had a couple of students who competed in a tough one, which is Pharmacology, and received medals, and that included Sally Liu and Vedant Patel. Our next medalist went not only to regionals, but then to states and won a medal, and she is, has been in HOSA for a couple of years now. She did a tough competition called Research Persuasive Speaking, and her name is Alexis Pineta. Our next medalist was Magellan Rankin, who's also our Vice President, and she competed in Behavioral Health. She also went to state competition. One of our students who couldn't be here but also won a medal is Kaylee Rivera, who won for Research Persuasive Speaking. And last but not least is Honor Whiteside, who went for Prepared Speaking and won a medal at Regionals. I want to thank you again for supporting these fine students.
Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you very much, students of HOSA. Next, we have our HIB report. Letter C, anyone have any questions or comments on our HIB report? And comments by the board solicitor?
None.
None, thank you. Items proposed by the superintendent?
Thank you. I would like to recommend discussion under personnel regarding the approval of retirements, resignations, terminations, leaves of absence, employment transfers, student substitutes, extracurricular activities, and extracurricular summer work.
Questions, comments?
I see that we're going to lose someone who's been a fixture at Vineland High School for a very, very long time, Bruce DePante, and the retiring from Recreation Maintenance. Bruce, he's almost, almost a legend of Vineland High School.
Well, you're a legend. You didn't know that?
Thank you. I think.
Anyone else, questions, comments? Next, Dr. Guccio?
Okay, next I recommend discussion regarding the approval of the following annual appointments. There are several listed here, so I'm going to recommend approval of A through U.
And U, too. Any questions or comments?
Discussion regarding the approval of all certificated district staff to possibly serve as home instruction tutors for the 2017-18 school year.
Questions, comments, anyone?
Discussion regarding authorization for the superintendent and the executive director of personnel to issue reasonable assurance of continued employment for the 2017-18 to substitute personnel.
Questions or comments, anyone?
Recommend discussion regarding authorization for the superintendent and the executive director of personnel to issue reasonable assurance of continued employment for the 2017-18 to substitute personnel.
Questions or comments, anyone? None.
Recommend discussion regarding the approval of field trips and district travel.
Questions, comments?
Recommend discussion regarding the approval of the contract for the project graduation trip, which is scheduled for Wednesday, June 14th, in accordance with NJSA 18A:18A-518.
Questions, comments, anyone?
Discussion regarding the approval of the bus evacuation drills that were completed in the months of March and April, as per the list provided and on file with the board secretary, and in accordance with the New Jersey Administrative Code 6A:27-11.2.
Questions, comments? Thank you.
Discussion regarding the approval of the first reading of the following bylaws, policies, and regulations. Would be Policy 5337 and Bylaw 0145.
Questions, comments? Thank you.
The next group are all mandated changes, and they're all listed, if anybody has any questions on any particular one.
Anyone? Thank you.
Recommend discussion under buildings and grounds regarding the approval of summer 2017 programs, preschool through grade 12, as on list provided and on file with the board secretary.
Questions, comments? Thank you.
Discussion regarding the approval of a request for a waiver of the toilet room facilities for the 2017-18 school year for the following, Max Lector School, Golon Learning Center, Sabatier School, Vineland YMCA, Barcy School, and Delago.
Questions, anyone, comments? None, thank you.
Discussion regarding the approval of a petition to the Executive County Superintendent of Schools to approve the following for use as temporary facilities for the 2017-18 school year. Four temporary units at Veterans Memorial School, one to five temporary, grades one to five temporary units at Mannies, and grades one to five temporary units at Winslow Elementary School, and pre-K rooms 405, 6, 508, 522, and 523.
Questions, comments? Thank you.
Discussion regarding the approval of a petition to the Executive County Superintendent of Schools to approve the following application for dual space use of educational space for the 2017-18 budget. Budget, I'm sorry, school year.
Anyone? Thank you.
Under finance, discussion regarding the approval of budgetary transfers in the general school-based and ECPA budgets from March 2017.
And that's just for one, or?
Each of them, the general budget school-based and ECPA budgets.
All right, questions, comments? None?
Discussion regarding the approval of the board secretary and treasurer reports for March 2017.
Questions?
Discussion regarding the approval of special education student placements.
Questions?
Discussion regarding approval to accept the following funding for Mannies Elementary School, it's the Kohl's Volunteer Program grant, and the amount of $500.
Questions, comments?
Discussion regarding the approval of the appointment of Helen G. Haley as the district's qualified purchasing agent, and to establish the bid threshold at the amount pursuant to NJSA 18A:18A-3A, and any increase authorized in NJSA 18A:18A-3B.
Questions, anyone? Thank you.
Discussion regarding the approval of a resolution appointing the following bank depositories for business checking, savings, and investments. Athletic Department Petty Cash Fund, athletic funds, budgetary, payroll agency, food service, payroll net, unemployment trust fund, flex spending, and capital reserve.
Questions, anyone?
Discussion regarding the approval of a resolution appointing the legal depositories for the investment of school district funds.
Questions?
Discussion regarding the approval of a resolution appointing official newspapers.
Questions, comments?
Discussion regarding the approval of a resolution appointing bargaining units. Discussion regarding the approval of a resolution authorizing the contract agent to enter into the tuition agreements for homeless students for 2017-18. Discussion regarding the approval to award the following contract, Broker of Record, Employees' Health Benefits, EUS, number 11-17-18 school year, Allen Associates. Discussion regarding the approval of health insurance renewal with Aetna Incorporated from July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018, with a projected amount of $29,957,622, which represents an increase of 6.9%.
I have a quick question. That's down from last year?
Yeah, last year, I think it went up 13.8%.
And that's down from last year?
Yeah. I mean, it goes up every year, but that's a very good rate.
I mean, it's up 6.9% from last year, but it's.
Last year was 13.
Right.
Discussion regarding the approval of the renewal of the Benicard Prescription Program with the RX Alliance, PEBT, from July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018, in the projected amount of $7,664,199, which represents an increase of 7.5%. Discussion regarding the approval of the renewal of the Delta Dental Plan with Dental Alliance from July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018, in the projected amounts of dental, Delta, I'm sorry, Delta Dental Premier Plan for $1,029,467, which is a zero increase, and the Delta Dental Flagship Plan, which is $257,450 with a zero increase. Discussion regarding the approval of two-year renewal for the following time and materials contracts at the current contract price from July 1, 2017, to June 30, 2018, with an option to renew for a one-year term for a maximum of a three-year contract.
That's A through?
A through F.
F. Anyone?
Discussion regarding the approval of year-three renewal for the following time and materials contracts at the current contract price from July 1, 2017, to June 30, 2018, and that is listed A through G. Discussion regarding the approval of the year-two renewal for the following time and materials contract at the Consumer Price Index maximum increase of .3% for the term of July 1, 2017, to June 30, 2018, with an option to renew for a one-year term for a maximum of a three-year contract. And that is for painting services at Dalco Painting Company. Discussion regarding the approval of the following year-three renewal for diesel fuel contract using the OPIS Pulse per Average Base Price for the day product is picked up from July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018, for diesel fuel, and that is Riggins Incorporated. Discussion regarding the approval of the following year-three renewal for trash pickup at the current contract prices for the term July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018, for trash pickup and its waste management. Discussion regarding the approval to award the following contract, telescopic seating replacement at VHS North Gymnasium, contractor Degler Whiting Incorporated, total price $130,000. Discussion regarding the approval of the year-three addendum with Sodexo Management Incorporated for food service management from September 1, 2017, through August 30, 2018, in a form acceptable by the board solicitor and superintendent. Discussion regarding the approval of a resolution that will allow private schools to provide free nutritious breakfast and/or lunch for students with disabilities. Discussion regarding the approval of the year-two renewal of the Contract with Insight Workforce Solutions LLC to provide substitute staffing services from July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018. Discussion regarding the approval of the membership renewal of the New Jersey Interscholastic Athletic Association for 2017-18 in the amount of $2,150. Discussion regarding the approval of a resolution awarding a professional services contract to Guccio Pepper DeSanto and Ruth for legal services at current rate as board solicitor for the fiscal year July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018. Discussion regarding the approval of a resolution awarding a professional services contract to Frank D. Domenico Esquire for legal services as alternate counsel at current rate for the fiscal year July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018. Discussion regarding the approval of a resolution awarding a professional services contract to Ford Scott &amp; Associates LLC for audit services for the fiscal year July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018, to audit the 2016-17 school year with charges not to exceed $79,000 and $6,000 for ASA audit. Discussion regarding the approval of a resolution awarding a professional service contract with Manders, Marigie, Ported, and Farrell Architects at the same contract prices from July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018. Discussion regarding the approval of a resolution awarding a professional services contract to Dr. Timothy Rhimes for medical services as chief school physician at the current rate for July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018. Discussion regarding the approval of a resolution awarding a professional services contract to Frank D. Domenico Esquire for legal services as alternate counsel at current rate for the fiscal year July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018. Discussion regarding the approval of a resolution awarding a professional services contract to Ford Scott &amp; Associates LLC for audit services for the fiscal year July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018, to audit the 2016-17 school year with charges not to exceed $79,000 and $6,000 for ASA audit. Discussion regarding the approval of a resolution awarding a professional service contract with Manders, Marigie, Ported, and Farrell Architects at the same contract prices from July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018. Discussion regarding the approval of a resolution awarding a professional services contract to Dr. Timothy Rhimes for medical services as chief school physician at the current rate for July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018. Discussion regarding the approval of a resolution awarding a professional services contract to Dr. Joseph P. Bernardino and Dr. Brad J. Bernardino for medical services as alternate school physicians at current rate for July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018. Discussion regarding the approval of the following contract for the before-and-after-school program from July 1, 2017, to June 30, 2018, with an option to renew for two one-year terms or one two-year term would be the Cumberland Cape Atlantic YMCA of Vineland. Discussion regarding the approval to award the following contract, Locksmith Van to Littleston Ford, total contract price $36,755. Discussion regarding the approval of a contract with JMI Enterprises LLC for school bus advertising in a form acceptable by the board solicitor and superintendent. Discussion regarding the approval of the bus advertisement for Sahara Sam's for one year in the amount of $1,937. Discussion regarding the approval of the 2017-18 contract for participation in Cape May County Shared Services Transportation at 5% for all routes and 7% at 5% for all routes and 7% for homeless student transportation. Discussion regarding the approval of the following in regards to the Cumberland County Regional Cooperative Transportation, and there are items 1 through 11 listed. That's it?
God, where do we go from here? Items for review by the Board. I have nothing to propose. Any Board members have anything to propose? Oh, put my glasses on, I can see. Oh, discussion regarding the approval of recommendation by the Finance Committee that the Board approve the award of the following contract: Labor Relations Attorney Negotiator, RFP Number 14-17/18, Contractor Guccio Pepper DeSanto and Ruth, 817 Landis Avenue, Vineland, New Jersey 08362, at the rate of $125 per hour from July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018. Any questions or comments?
I just have a question. With these, with this particular RFP, there were different evaluators. What were the criteria?
The criteria is technical management and cost. So the evaluators look at, and they're weighted, and the weighted numbers are in the RFP itself. So the evaluators rate them, score them, and it goes from there.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, no? Review of the bills during March 2017? Any questions concerning the bills? Opportunity for the public to address the Board? This is for any item, right? Dr., Mr. DeSanto, any item? Address the Board? No yellow slips, no? Okay. Committee reports? Any committee reports?
I have, go ahead.
Go ahead, no, go ahead. I have three, so go ahead.
The Policy and Personnel Meeting was, well, we've had, I guess, two. But the most recent committee recommendations were, we had a discussion regarding Bylaw 0143, and the committee decided that the bylaw was okay the way it was, so we're not going to be doing any changes with respect to that particular bylaw. There's also Bylaw 170, and this is the bylaw that allows Board members to Skype in or to call. That, we've, we're going to do some changes on that, and it's going to become effective January 2018. There was, we also reviewed the, our regulation with respect to the dress code. That's 5511.2. And this was, essentially, there were requests by Board members, as well as a lot of the parents, with respect to just adding for the high school purposes, allowing the students in middle school and high school to wear those items that they purchase through the school store. And also, at the high school level, allowing the students to wear gray polo tops since it's part of their school colors. So those are the changes. It also expands some of the jackets that the students can wear, which includes hoodies and some other, other items. As far as personnel goes, Dr. Rossi discussed several personnel issues, including possible tenure charges. Non-tenure letters have been sent out. Staff being reassigned from Landis School and Ammon Road School. Rights notices continue to be sent to all employees who are on the agenda. And also, there was a discussion with respect to replacement of clerical staff at Memorial due to a vacancy. That's about it.
Clarify hoodies. Was that item sold in the school store, hoodies?
Actually, that's not my, I don't, my...
Was it items, the hoodie part?
It's as long as they comply with the school colors. I believe they can wear hoodies, but they just can't have the hoods up.
It still has to be in compliance with?
Compliance with the colors and whatnot.
Yes.
I wasn't in the meeting, so I had a question. Ms. Cottaspadi?
I'm going to start with our transportation meeting. Our first item we discussed was the revenue. To increase the revenue in the Transportation Department, we added bus advertising, as people know, with Board approval. To date, $29,709 has been collected. The department also took Cumberland County Regional Cooperative Transportation Initiative, adding an additional $70,518. So we have a total revenue of $102,23. We still have a driver shortage, even with the modest pay increase. The state has, has told Mr. Calabini that they will allow outside contractors, contractors to test drivers to help with the backlog of securing qualified drivers. It seems like we, if people want to do this, there's such a wait to get, to get their license. But that program hasn't started yet, and there's no timetable. The committee talked about subcontracting more of the bus routes, maintaining a good standby pool of drivers in-house, and possibly going forward to stop all lease purchases of the 54-passenger buses. Summer registration, additional part-time staff will be hired for the summer registration load. Bus passes will be sent out earlier this year without homeroom printed on the pass. Parents will need to go to the parent portal for homeroom information. Advertising continues for our preschool registration, which I'm going to get into a little bit later. The Z-Pass, currently we're operating at 88% usage. The Z-Pass program has been very useful in locating students who get off on the wrong bus stop and assisting parents in finding their children. 2017-18 school year, we will have a new and improved Z-Pass card that will be implemented. Combination card will have the student ID, electronic scanning for lunch, and student bus scanning. The late, we have some late bus issues due to driver absenteeism and lack of qualified drivers. Some schools have some late pickups, but our Transportation Department has been on top of it, and he's been working with Shepherd Bus to resolve the late bus issue. And this, the most challenging day seems to be their half a days. So I'd like to thank our Transportation Department, Mr. Calabini. They've been working very hard to address some of the issues that we've had, and they're doing a great job. Curriculum. We discussed, when Landis closes, reallocating Landis library resources and trying to find out the most efficient way to do that. We discussed Option 2 in PE, including identification of the criteria for activities to meet the state standards. One of our school board members, Mr. Fioki, saw something when he was out and about T-Mobile, may be willing to partner with our district to include some internet access for no additional cost above the cost of the Chromebook with a two-year commitment. And also, the Sprint program internet for the home, we have a grant application, I believe. We also talked about a two-year degree as a college pathway during high school. And my last committee report is on the preschool. I went, had a meeting with our providers last night. They just had their Little Folks Festival, which I heard the turnout was, was fantastic. I, I was out of town, and I missed it. They had over 700 people. So they're going to try to do it on a Friday night now because it seemed to work so much better. If anybody has any ideas about getting registration out, they're having, still having some problems with that, so... And I believe Gia has a film that maybe we could see from preschool. It's like an advertising thing. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Cottaspadi. You have a committee report?
Yeah, the Facilities Committee report. We had discussion on the property sales. We had a discussion regarding a potential lease of 120 Wood Street. We discussed athletic field maintenance, the softball and baseball field drainage issues. Mr. Weaver is going to address this with Mr. Robbins in the Athletic Maintenance Department. We had a discussion regarding the donated land, some misconception that we were going to be building walking paths. The paths are what they are at the current moment. They have to be, how did you put it, porous? Porous. And we had facilities updates. Department of Ed has approved the projects that have been sent to them. Roofing was discussed. Bond of completion dates and dates to make claims for poor work. Lincoln Avenue Middle School, which is known as Middle School 2, is on pace at this time to be completed by May of 2018. And with that, we have a beam signing tomorrow, May 4. And Ammon Road was discussed. The state has acknowledged receipt of a letter not to renew the lease, but they have not responded back in writing at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
One more committee report.
Oh, go ahead.
Finance Committee met on April 25th, last Tuesday. Myself, Kim Cottaspadi, Mr. Jennings via phone, and Helen Haley were in attendance. We discussed the following: Allen Associates for Broker of Record for Health Insurance, Guccio Pepper for Labor Negotiations, Negotiation Counsel, and renewal for Sedexo Food Service Management. We also discussed the budget, potential changes prior to the meeting on the first. That's about it.
Oh, okay, thank you. Is there any old business? Anyone? New business? Is there any, anyone has any comments at all? Mr. Medio? Mr. Sabrina?
Not tonight.
Not tonight? Mr. Fioki? Mr. Holmes? You're good? Miss Acosta? Ms. Cottaspadi? Jeff? No, me either. So do I have a motion for adjournment?
They're moved.
A favor?
Aye.